Councilman Lynch, if you would.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to this republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call to order this regular session of Vienna City Council. Having taken your role and having a quorum, we will proceed. The first item on our agenda this evening is a presentation for an employee or the employee of the quarter. Mr. Metz, if you would.
Well, we've heard of our senior. We've never heard of him.
Where about the fall?
Uh, there were no other applications. He said, "I would like to..." So, you are employee of the quarter, right? You ever been employee of the quarter?
Uh, no.
Yeah, well, we understand why. So, when I took office, one of the things that I wanted to do was to implement a program in which that we could recognize our employees. The city of Vienna is blessed to have some incredible people that work for it and do service that nobody ever sees or knows or what goes on. And we've implemented this and we worked with it. And over the course of the past six months, this was my first time in office, as have many that are standing here. You know, there was a learning curve to a lot of things that went on. And I, unlike, you know, some individuals in the past, I stayed out and about probably to be an aggravation to a lot of the department heads that wish I would just stay inside. Jack Mathers didn't like me moving flower boxes, but you know what? I did! It was good, you know? So, you know, I stay constantly about the city, you know, checking on things, looking at things, talking to people. And I don't know how often, I don't call, I text.
Right.
You know, I take a picture of something, I text it, somebody comes into my office, I call Craig. And, you know, I don't get a... I've never gotten a "I'm not doing that" or "We're not doing that." I've always gotten the "We'll get it taken care of." And then even before I know it was taken care of, it was taken care of. And over the course of the last six months, he has very quickly answered all of my requests, answered the requests of citizens and businesses throughout Vienna. He and his department gave exceptional support to the Freedom Festival that just occurred last month, doing a lot of work. And there's a lot of things that I gave him. One, and it was not just for the Freedom Festival, but it was for the city as a whole, to create a parking area on a portion of the old John Manville industrial site. He laid it out, and before I even knew they had started work on it, they started work on it. And we added 250 spots to an area that many said that we would never be able to use. He accomplished that. So, I could continue to go on and on and on about some of these things that have come up, small and large. Some people notice and some people won't. But I learned in the Army, and I was always told that if you wanted to be successful, A, you had to have a good team. And I am very thankful and very blessed that the city of Vienna does have a good team. We have outstanding department heads that know their jobs and do their jobs. They listen when I give them a direction, but most of all, they also give advice when I'm trying to figure out something else. Something out, I should say. And we do that, and we work together with a team. I was also always told that there probably was not a problem you could not fix if you had a big enough hammer or a big enough wrench. So, tonight, I'm going to present Craig.
World's day.
Yeah. So, I didn't think you'd want a cell phone charger. But I thought, "What am I gonna give Craig?" Well, you know, what am I gonna present with Craig that he probably doesn't already have? And you probably already have one of these, but you probably never got one in his award, his recognition card. So, you know, I went and I found one of the biggest pipe wrenches I could find because, A, you know, we are a good team and we work well together. But B, there's gonna be some times that we're gonna need a bigger wrench. But this is not just any special wrench. During department head meetings, when... And it's just something, you know, cute and corny we do. When department heads do good things, we give out gold stars. And they usually stick their gold star on their shirt. But tonight, your gold star is going on your wrench. And on behalf of the city of Vienna and all that you do, I would like to congratulate you on being the second-quarter employee of the quarter. The only thing you'd like to say?
Yeah.
Don't use that here.
No word each night.
No word each night.
Maybe we can throw some Stormbringers.
That's it.
I appreciate everything you do. It means a lot. But this is... I've worked with a lot of great people, and that's... They're the ones who deserves employees or Department of the Year. If it wasn't for them guys, I could... Or maybe, sorry. Go back for me. But if it wasn't for those people, you know, we wouldn't get things done like we do. And I'll include you all too, because you all supply the funding. So, if I don't have the funding, I'm being done. So, this is great. You might not like me in couple of lines. Then you start watering me. Appreciate it.
At least you have the wrench to be able to do that. Congratulations once again. Give another round of applause. Look, if we see him walking around town with that, we'll know he means business. Can you hand me my glasses? I'm old and I can't see, and I lay them down there. I know. Welcome to the club. Tonight, we did not have anyone sign up for the public forum. The minutes have been printed and posted and circulated. Are there any corrections to the minutes? If not, the minutes will stand approved as posted. We do not have any unfinished business, so at this time, we'll move on to new business. The first item on our agenda this evening is a discussion from the home consortium from Mr. Ryan Fluharty. Come on up. You're the next contestant.
Oh, great. Right up here? Yeah, just... Oh, I feel a little bit. All right. Good afternoon. My name is Ryan Fluharty. I am the housing coordinator for the city of Parkersburg. As you may or may not know, Wood County, you all, us, and Williamstown make up the Parkersburg-Wood County Home Consortium, which seeks to assist in the housing problems like Wood County. Before you, I have the program budget and as well as the proposal descriptions, which I'd like you guys to consider, which, once we get this... If you guys consider to sign it, we have to submit to HUD so they can formalize the funds that we received. For the fiscal year 2025, HUD has allocated us $252,591.13. Including that, with last year's 2024 program income, that is the $160,000. That totals $412,591. I guess I'll go over some of the funded items that we have. First one is the Community Housing Development Organization, which is CHODO. We have allocated $40,000 to that. We will pay Habitat for Humanity. They create one house per year usually. In the past, they've received more funds, but they've been slow to... A little bit slow to expedite those funds. The next program we have is the Down Payment Assistance Program. That one's at $181,000. This program was made to assist first-time homebuyers. Of course, they have to be low to moderate income and paying for the down payment closing costs assisted with homebuying in Wood County. Next, we have the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Project, which is $150,000. That is to be determined. We don't have a developer for that. But we basically help them create new rental properties in the area. Right now, we have the Patriot Point getting constructed in South Side, tucked away behind the Lowe's, Walmart. So, once we're able to find a developer, we can proceed with that. And then, of course, general admin funds. That's $41,013. Don't ask why there's 13 cents. HUD has some kind of formula that they determine that funds with. But that's for stuff like paying for environmental reviews for associate projects, substantial amendments, stuff that, you know, would arise during administration of these programs. That's all I have.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Fluharty? Very good. You may be seated, sir.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the resolution approving our participation within this program. Mr. Skogstad, if you would.
Do you want me to read the whole thing?
I don't. You can skim it.
We can... Well...
Whatever you can lately do to keep it short.
I'll read it by title, and I will go directly to the resolution itself. There are several paragraphs that lay out the history, and I think Mr. Fluharty has covered that. A resolution, the city of Vienna authorizing participation in the Parkersburg-Wood County Home Consortium for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026, and approving the fiscal year 2025-2029 five-year consolidated plan and fiscal year 2025 annual action plan, authorizing the filing of the plans with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Now therefore be resolved by the common council, the city of Vienna. That, one, the city of Vienna, West Virginia will continue to cooperate with the city of Parkersburg in a consortium for participation in the home program. And, two, a copy of this resolution is to be submitted and requested to HUD to approve funding of the Parkersburg-Wood County Home Consortium for the above fiscal year 2025 home investment partnership program.
Having heard the resolution, do I have a motion to accept the resolution as written? I have a motion to accept. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Having a motion and a second, open for discussion. Having no dis... Mr. Disler, did you have something?
Does anybody know of all these cuts that Trump is doing, including cuts to this program? Whether it's the federal funding that's gonna come in to match our funds?
Do you have any?
About federal funding cuts, we're not concerned. Trump has tried to cut funds in the past and it was unsuccessful. I know usually our program year starts in May. There was a little bit of holdup with concern about the federal government holding the budget, if you guys remember that. But other than that, there's no concern anymore.
Any other discussion? I have a motion and a second. No other discussion. All those in favor of approving the resolution as read signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. At this item, at this time for items number three and four, I request that the council move into executive session. Do I have a motion to move into executive session?
Some of it.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of moving into executive session, please signify by raising your right hand.
There's chocolate. And just...
There's chocolate in here. That's why we're going in here.
And just for the record and for purposes of maintenance, this is to discuss... We have two items on the agenda for discussion, a real estate matter and employee personnel matter. And this is to discuss those two issues. And we'll go from there.
All right. And we will at six o'clock.
It is much cooler.
As the sound of the siren let the record reflect that we had come back into regular session at seven, there was discussion held, but no decisions were made. That brings us to our reports and standing on standing boards and committees. Is there anything from a board or a committee that anyone would like to report on?
The planning commission meeting will be next Monday at 5:30. This is their regular meeting. There'll be some discussion and some bids on maybe some edits or changes to the comprehensive plan. If we do any of that, of course, we'll have to have a public hearing before we do. I'm thinking there'll probably be maybe the changes that Chris Mancuso, some of those that he wanted originally. I don't think we're going to have any big changes, so everyone's invited.
Anyone else? Real quickly, yeah, I lied to Craig and told him that he was here to talk about paving. So honestly, did you know you were getting that tonight?
No.
No? You didn't, really?
No.
Well, good. It worked.
No one to tell me who was.
Oh, really?
Yeah, listen again. I had to take up.
That was good. Well, my reasoning to get him here, I told him I needed to have him talk about paving, which was not true at all. It was the right nice, that was the only way I could figure out how to get in here. But while you're here, do you have an update on streets and repairs and those various things that you'd like to give?
Yeah, I do. Like I said, most of y'all submitted what you wanted done and what you didn't want done. Talked to someone on phone, some submit letters. Took out all the advice. There's some projects we removed. 55th Street, Greenmont Hills, we removed that, but we did add a few. But the total price, once you get, this is just paving. This is not including any concrete work. This paving alone is going to be $538,000. What we're going to do is 10th Street from 12th to 14th Avenue. 14th Avenue from 8th to 12th Street. 8th Avenue, 18th to 21st Street. 31st Street from Grand Central to 8th Avenue. The alley, this section is street off between 34th and 37th, Second and Third Avenue. 21st Street, 8th, 9th Avenue. Third Avenue from 39th Street to 37th Street. Greenmont Hills Terrace, 13th Avenue from off of 56th Street. The Polyneare Park, new parking lot down there. And the 9th and 10th Street off the 15th Avenue. So the 31st Street, I know that really wasn't the end of the pave this year, but I installed the signs this past week in that particular area for the kids playing and then kind of walked that street a little bit and it's a lot worse than I thought it would be, thought it was. So I went and did a list. There's some serious deterioration on the edges, on the curb lines from Grand Central to 8th Avenue. So I add that to the paving section. Concrete sections, there's areas out there. We need 19th Street being repaired. Some area off the 3rd Avenue between 41st and 46th Street. A lot of utility line of repair sections we got to do where we've done some utility repairs in the past, get some concrete replaced. It's no big projects on concrete. It's a lot of little areas, sections here and there. So you'll see a lot of patchwork being done. I call it patchwork, it's sections like 20, 10 by 20 foot sections.
Does anyone have any questions for Craig?
I appreciate y'all's comments when y'all did any daily talks, especially the 3rd Street.
Want to give a shout out to Public Works this past week. There was a gas line repair here on 29th Street and the contractor for the gas company ripped a rather large water line out of the ground in 29th Street and the avenue. Looked like you could put a boat down it, there was so much water. City crews responded to that and within a two hour time period had it, had the water shut off, had the repair done and had water back on servicing our community. So Craig, please extend our appreciation to all of those guys that made that happen. I know we were playing for a lot longer period of time, but with their efficiency, they did great work and we're very appreciative of that. If there's no other reports on boards or committees, are there any closing council comments?
So last meeting, we, there was a citizen came in and brought up the Spencer's Landing and having events down there that included alcohol and beverages. There was a little bit of discussion that went on kind of during the comment period. I just wanted to take a chance, A, to clarify my thoughts there and B, also have a couple comments to add. But, you know, I think, I think events like the Taste of Parker's Burke would be a great addition to doing at Spencer Landing around property. Those events are taken and they are private and I think that's a good look for, or a good event that draws people into the city. And I think that would be a benefit to have in our city. But more importantly, I think it leads to another discussion that I would like to possibly see added to the agenda in the future, if not, if not the next one, would be extending the line from where we are able to serve by the cup. We've got a couple vacant buildings that are ready to be rented right there in, you know, Old Town Vienna. And I think some, you know, nice restaurants there would do well. I think having a couple restaurants in there would do very well. And I think having the ability to be able to serve by the glass. Let me be clear, I don't want to see these places stay open until 2 o'clock in the morning. That's the last thing I want. And I feel like a lot of Vienna would agree with that. But I mean, if you shut them down at, you know, 10 p.m. or something, if we adjust the ordinance to include some restrictions there. But anyway, I just wanted to get that out. I thought there was a little bit of misunderstanding of my comments last time. And I think, you know, this is something that would benefit our city and I think it's definitely something that sounded like council may be in favor of looking at and possibly changing in the future. And I'd like to have a discussion and get the community involved in the discussion.
Any other council comments? No other council comments? This meeting stands adjourned.